...of the United States of America and to the Republic from which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Here.
Captain Martin Walker.
Yeah.
Captain Martin Walker.
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 We drew a form. Uh, I believe Captain Mayes is on trial. Uh, Captain Martin Walker is in Los Angeles, he's scheduled, and uh, Captain Martin Walker is in Kansas. Is that correct?
Captain Mayes is conducting trial.
Conducting?
(laughing).
Is he doing anything on?
That's how we use the term "on trial."
Well, for us laypeople, that's...
He's not running a ballot.
Well, with a few in the press. Uh, we have these, uh, you're seeing here, it's more possible. It's why they, uh, this was a bit of a problem because we changed the date later, so appreciate that we have to ask, and I know that was the other question. Um, why don't we start with a discussion on those kind of toughs with three of our colleagues missing. Hopefully their staff can weigh in and give us the result by Tuesday. But we have the issue of September eleventh meeting day, which we need to move, and the question of whether or not we should have an August meeting day. So, if my sense is, if last summer is any guide, we were pretty busy at that August meeting. Remember those summer meetings went late, whatever. Um, it may make sense to try to, in a, uh, in an August meeting. Well, we last left that off. Captain Martin Walker, if you had a concept on the, on the date that was, not just you, I think it was several.
The fourteenth was a problem. So then, basically, we had most of the board sending okay to the twenty-first, which was just moving in one week, uh, into the future. And then there was a potential conflict with Captain, uh, Todd Pepper. Um, and she had, I think it was something about family thing or something. And then we talked about also the possibility of moving into the sixteenth, which would lead to that Thursday. Again, I think there was another conflict with Captain Walker. So, I don't know where else to go with this, but...
Well, among the four of us, fourteen's out, so the sixteenth, twenty-first, twenty-third, um, twenty-eighth, thirty. How, how does the board look on those?
(inaudible).
All five?
I could put this up here. Okay.
Okay. So why don't we just put this out, the staff or, or any, instance for that? All, uh, sixteen, twenty-first, twenty-third, twenty-eighth, thirty.
Sixteen, I think it's October.
Okay.
Twenty-one or twenty-three?
How about twenty-three? Twenty-three's good. How about, uh, twenty, let's, let's rule out the twenty-first, because that was college problem, right?
Yeah. Yeah, it was, that was the sixteenth and twenty-first session, right?
Yeah.
You want to do twenty-three work session, twenty-eight meeting?
How's the twenty-eight work?
(inaudible).
Twenty-eight's good. So we'll do twenty-third work session, twenty-eight, that makes sense?
Okay, so we'll draft up a ready list. Yeah, we can amend it anyway.
Okay, so we'll do, that, that, I think that'll...
Twenty-three, twenty-eight work?
Yeah. I think that'll, uh, that's far enough away from liberty. So that will maybe, uh, stretch out.
Now, work session will be eleven.
Yeah, and particularly since we're moving, the next issue is, uh, we had the September, what, eleventh, sixth work session and eleventh board meeting, right? What's the next, we have the twenty-fifth is the next scheduled board meeting. Do we want to do, the original August, can we cancel the September eleventh?
Well, the original suggestion was to leave the work session on the sixth and do the board meeting on the thirteenth, so to not have it on September eleventh, you could certainly cancel it and have the board choices.
I'm not gonna be on the...
Okay.
That's, that's, that's a problem. Um, the, well, let me ask, can we, since we, that, that causes the same problem, right? If we, if we cancel the eleventh, that still leaves a month.
What about, sorry, going to focus the fourth, if not, you want to do...
Are you going, are you going to leave?
What about the thirteenth and the eighteenth? Thirteen work session, eighteen town board?
Um, could, could, I'm, I'm reading that part, can we do that? I don't have a pass, though.
Yeah, thirteen work session, which would be one thirty.
Actually, I think that's the other scheduling issue, because Captain Pepper is retiring at the end of the day.
Because she won't be doing the talk.
Oh, no, he's eleven, move it to eleven thirty. What's that? That's pretty the way, so...
Doesn't matter. We'll do the one thirty for now, and then, uh, we'll vote.
So, okay, so just...
Is the thirteen gonna be work session?
Yeah, so we're gonna do, in August, we're gonna add a work session and a meeting, work session on the twenty-third, meeting on the twenty-eighth. On, in September, we're canceling the work session on the sixth and the town board meeting on the eleventh, and we're replacing it with a work session on the thirteenth.
And town board meeting on the eighth.
And then we're gonna keep the work session on the twentieth and the town board meeting on the twenty-fifth. Okay? That gives us, um, a nice option in terms of hearing, so if we can try to get some good hearings on, particularly in August, without having to do a town board, try to look that up. Um, okay, good. Um, obviously, from Captain Mayes, Captain Walker, and Captain Pepper, if, if that's the problem between now and Tuesday, just bring it up this morning, okay?
So at the twenty-third, work session, we're still leaving out one third, you don't want anything in there? Or this, eleven?
We'll keep it at one thirty, and then we'll save him.
Can somebody come up with a red again then? Because now I have like two town boards, two work sessions, so it's...
The ones that are out...
It's the eleven?
The sixth, uh, the sixth work session, eleven, fourteen. Uh, so, and why don't we roll right into planning? Yep?
The first item on the agenda is to hear final, your care that was self open from the previous meeting of President. We have a meeting of the applicant, you know, to go over some of the comments, preparing some covenants and restrictions, which will present to the county people, and order them to accept. And, um, next Tuesday, if, if we can, if we like, we can close the hearing down and sort of, um, um, I don't know.
Uh, the board also has two other hearings scheduled. Pass me it, everyone. The board has two additional hearing schedules for Tuesday. Uh, one is gas development farming bill, uh, both of these are in CB four. This is existing by site, just out this year in the corner of North Ocean and Granny Road, who, uh, seeking to reopen the gas station, but they do require special permits from the town board. They want to reutilize these existing buildings, their intention is opening, uh, painted and reopen it, but, uh, the other is Lewis Enterprises, uh, which is in Yape. They're seeking a change as known from A one and J two to the J five with special permits. Um, so if the board has any further questions, Diane has the site planned up for Lewis Enterprises. Uh, is that County Route twenty-one, or will that be out here in Yape? If the board has any further questions?
We, uh, want to hear fine, so we believe this all, we're trying to resolve it. Until the time we, uh, we may want to... Well, hopefully, everybody put together the language, uh, board department plan, and also mayor representatives, so we can possibly go up.
Mark, we had also scheduled a presentation on twenty-five A cars, Diane, I don't know if you wanted to do that.
(inaudible).
Uh, I, I think I'll ask Diane just to kind of do, uh, do this digest version for us and give the full version on Tuesday night. As you know, this is a plan that's been shaped over the last eighteen months with a lot of civic and public input. And tonight, uh, Tuesday night, the action is to accept and not to adopt this plan we proposed. Diane?
Thank you. We're asking the board to accept the draft land use plan and generic departmental impact statements to the Wayne River Mount Sinai Route twenty-five A land use plan. We'll accept that document in order to release it for public comment. At the time the board accepts this plan, we'd also like to schedule a public hearing to support acceptance of plan, if you'll open it for public comment, or maybe a public comment meeting. This plan is an example of community-based planning that our department, uh, continues to carry out. Uh, this particular project began in full of twenty oh nine, six communities were involved in a, in a number of public meetings. The report, the vision report was accepted October twenty-ten, and we used that as guidance to, uh, inform the land use plan that we're asking you to accept for public comment. The community-driven process was, uh, we had a twenty-member citizen advisory committee, over seven public community meetings, surveys, questionnaires, and councilman to speak the extensive, uh, community process that we instituted so we could bring forward the land use plan. Recommendations that we took from the vision to the land use plan included reducing, uh, congestion on Route twenty-five A, improving landscaping and street skate, preserving open space, historic assets, and, and negating, uh, future impacts from large format retail. Uh, the vision report was again accepted October twenty-ten, will have public hearing beginning July seventeenth. A synopsis of some plan recommendations include the Route twenty-five A overlay district that will not permit large format retail in the transitional areas between hamlet centers, and will limit large format retail within the hamlet and commercial centers to less than seventy-five thousand square feet. Another recommendation that came forward in the document is a planned continuation overlay district for parcels greater than thirty-five acres, where we're looking to cluster out the thirty, some of the properties, preserving seventy percent of open space. Uh, our adoption schedule for the land use plan, the public hearing's July seventeenth. Uh, we will look to accept the, um, all the comments and, and compile them in the final generic environmental impact statement, and we could look to adopt the final plan in September twenty-sixth.
I have a brief summary.
Thank you for September eleventh.
Yes, yes. Oh, is, is there any questions? Great. That's it. Thank you.
Thank you, Diane.
Um, I've got to redo the, the, um, the, the, what, the, the, that, um, it's very good, it's like, um, and, it's, it's like, um, September twenty fifth is not the case. So, my suggestion is, we have to fully, October, we're meeting on October.
And a work session on October fourth. Our suggestion to do is have a work session on the thirteenth. How are you all looking for a town board meeting on September?
Where's September?
Work session thirteen?
And a town board meeting on September twenty.
Just have one meeting, that being September, we can call that.
So moving, okay, so we, we have lots of, so we're moving the one of those, that's the schedule for the eighteen, usually Tuesday, we're moving it to the twenty.
For that, the twenty, and we are...
I'm locating the other.
(inaudible).
So work sessions on the thirteenth, now, on the twentieth, now becomes town board.
Right. So work session on the thirteenth, town board meeting on the twentieth. We are now canceling, the work session on the one, (inaudible) town board meeting on the second.
It would be good, I mean, show people that we're getting here, but, there's, there's a few in the air, we should also, you know, reconfirm, we're gonna try to sample these questions come Tuesday, so hopefully...
Well, I, there's, well, everybody's staff members know, if there's a problem, you know, anyway, but right now, uh...
Thirteen is one.
Thirteen is one. December's the odd, March, yeah, fourth is the day of the Labor Day, I'm actually working on it, town that day, eleven fifty, September one, eighteen is Rosh Hashanah, and twenty fifty is Rosh Chayot, so every Tuesday, it's Rosh Chayot, September, so, we'll set any available.
And what is, October, we have the work session on the fourth?
October is work session on the fourth, and town board meeting on the eleventh. And then we have work session on the eighteenth, and town board meeting on the twenty-third, so we have a good two in the calendar. All right, perfect. Um, we next, we have the...
(inaudible) three, three, four, super negative declaration, (inaudible) acceptance of (inaudible) (inaudible) capability of building and land (inaudible).
We might, okay.
(inaudible) environmental bond (inaudible) committee to oversee (inaudible) actually (inaudible).
I think we're gonna be able to move this, I got a, another question for you, Bob, this came up, so it's just a heart membership, but, I think, hopefully we'll be able to have it Tuesday.
We probably can change this and then deal with the membership, like, right?
Right, okay.
Five thirteen resolution confirming the election majority voted in Board of the Senate review of (inaudible) 2012 (inaudible) (inaudible).
For a confirmation, please.
Five thirty-six, authorizing (inaudible) (inaudible). Authorizing (inaudible). Authorizing (inaudible) parcel of Suffolk County own land for (inaudible) (inaudible). Five sixty-five, authorizing (inaudible) security deposit and (inaudible). Five sixty-six, authorizing (inaudible) projects that are (inaudible) required to (inaudible). Five seventy-seven, setting up public hearings (inaudible) local law (inaudible) eighty-five code of the (inaudible) entitled zoning by (inaudible) article twenty-nine, L, industrial one district led industry in section eighty-five, three one three, entitled essential criteria in section eighty-five, two one five, entitled special permit criteria by (inaudible) section eighty-five, two one five B, entitled electric generating ability.
What is this?
Allows for solar generation on L one?
What, what we're doing is, um, under, right now, is the essential criteria, we have the height of the, of the building for electric generating ability, removing that under special permit criteria to the town board, so the board has to (inaudible) that. Because right now, the stat height is special permit criteria, the building height is not essential criteria, so that way puts it as a town board, there's clear (inaudible) permit criteria, so we need our (inaudible).
Is this being done for any particular building?
We have, we, like, we said that, well, so we're getting an application, and, uh, and the one (inaudible) already, and there's, uh, expecting a couple. And public hearings, the (inaudible).
It's possible, this is, this is, I'm, I'm trying to finish, yes, for us, we're working on this issue, and all our (inaudible) have no idea, so, now, it's, it's, obviously, you're look, we're looking to make an amendment, to deal with it, so, the mission criteria, so what, normally, we'd have to go to the DPA, or we'd have to, or...
Probably DPA.
If you have a, if you have a (inaudible).
Five sixteen, authorizations to the Suffolk County Council of DSA, (inaudible) for the (inaudible) district, all (inaudible) survival camping event, October twelve, fourteen to that as well. Five sixty-nine, author (inaudible) (inaudible). Five seventy, (inaudible) New York adopted (inaudible) authority (inaudible) improvement of town facilities, giving estimated maximum cost, there are (inaudible) eighty thousand dollars appropriate that amount, (inaudible) authorized issuance of eighty thousand dollar bond of the (inaudible) finance appropriation. Five seventy-one, (inaudible).
Wait, wait, I have, uh, Matt, this one, I mean, where are we with this? I mean, this was something I know, you had worked on, Matt, so we, we...
Eighty-eight?
Yeah.
This is authorizing the fund, (inaudible) definitely issued the RFP, and now the fund will be in place, so there's no worries, so, so.
So are we gonna have the awards in time for Tuesday, or not?
I don't believe we're, we're not, (inaudible).
Okay, so the RFP's already been out?
I believe the RFP has been issued.
I agree, you see, (inaudible).
Five seventy-one, (inaudible) declaration for acceptance of donation of land, (inaudible) landman made (inaudible) payment for open space purposes. Five seventy-two, authorization for acceptance of (inaudible) landman made (inaudible) for open space purposes. Five seventy-four, authorization for execution. Five seventy-three, authorization agreements in the Suffolk County Office of Engaging the (inaudible) to make (inaudible) residential repair program available to new citizens in town. Five seventy-four, authorizations for an execution agreement with (inaudible) network Inc., profit online orders of (inaudible) (inaudible). Five seventy-five, authorizing a one-year renewal of contract two zero one zero 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 six six, (inaudible) repair (inaudible) approximately annual expenditure of thirty thousand dollars. But the (inaudible) acceptance of the draft, (inaudible) (inaudible) and draft in their environment impact events, commencement of minimum thirty-day comment period, there are setting up public hearing on the same. Is that how the sharing is to be, so I can...
All right, so there's some additional resolutions on top of the list, accepting a donation of a utility building, a legion field, for the Mastic Sports Club, and waiving any and all associated fees that relates to the construction of a building on (inaudible) property. Number two is the appointment of Franklin Whitey Lewandowski as a marriage officer. Uh, this is for one day, so he can perform his daughter's wedding. Number three is authorization from town board for budget modification to CDBD program to change the project name. Number four is authorizing the Battle of the Bay Boat Race organization, use the southwest portion of the Shirley train station parking lot on August twenty-fifth and twenty-sixth. Number five is the award of a bid.
Is that, are they, are they holding the Battle of the Bay?
Yeah, they, they, they anticipate they're not going to have to use it, just as an overflow location, where they'll bring people by bus, or park, possibly the train station, uh, on the weekend, and buckling down to support.
So they're doing it at, right?
Yeah, out, out in the ocean, out of, uh, the...
Yeah, we should take a look at that, because that's a perennial, that's a perennial problem, because insurance and, versus, father requirement, I remember, uh, when I slipped, and I slipped, I believe, I might be misspeaking, but I slipped, I don't, not, continue that relationship, so if the (inaudible) would do it, so, if it's a county thing, that's one thing, but if we're responsible for, you know, providing coverage for that race, that's something...
Honestly, we're doing a coverage, we're just giving them a, a, the authorization just to use, if they need, the (inaudible), that's, that's all. With the purpose later on, the permit to have the (inaudible). There was, there was a meeting, I, we should probably talk about this, there was a meeting at the Mastic Beach Fire Department, that went one way, there were subsequent meetings that went a different way, and now I think everyone is on board, there is a sort of difference, uh, with it.
I, I think I'll, we can, so, if I, I've had, it's my third conversation, where to try to have the (inaudible) provided, it's just a problem, so, you know, we could be, we could be consulted, and, and talk to, I'll give you the fact.
Okay. Number five is the award of a bid for Canine Road Maintenance Garage and Site Improvement. Number six is a, a word of a bid for beach scraping at Davis Park, Ocean Bay, Ocean Bay Park, Point of Woods, Fire Island, and Seaview. Number seven is a capital budget amendment for highway, uh, facility improvement. Number eight is an encroachment agreement for one nineteen Magnolia Drive, Rocky Point. Number nine is the granted permits subject to all necessary approvals from the US Coast Guard for the Battle on the Bay Boat Race on August twenty-fifth and twenty-sixth.
That's one, probably, right?
Number ten is a payment to JME Fire, is Fire Sprinkler Corporation, this is for inspections at the Rose Car (inaudible) facility, I believe, it's, uh, thirteen hundred dollars. Number eleven is global concessions, veterans and firemen, Ballfield Center Public Hearing, um, this is for, uh, concession for Lola's Sunshine Hot Dog, for a thousand dollars for each location. Number twelve is a PSR approval for Wayne River Duck Pond, Pond Overflow Pipe Project. Number thirteen is to renew the contract for water line installation. Number fourteen is to renew the contract for Western Flower Assemblies. Uh, number fifteen is to increase the limit for equipment purchases at auction to forty thousand dollars. Uh, this is for highways, but the next one, which is authorizing an intermunicipal agreement between the (inaudible) and the Village of (inaudible). Uh, this is to purchase a vehicle from them for forty thousand dollars. Number seventeen is authorizing the renaming of the (inaudible) Amphitheater to Penny Sabre Amphitheater at Ballfield, and there are a couple others that aren't on your list here. One, uh, two thousand twelve budget transfers and amendments. Number two, authorizing, uh, authorizing interfund loan from the General Fund to the (inaudible) Fire Protection District, and if you have any additional questions, Commissioner Finance can answer those. There'll, it's possible there'll be a resolution approving, uh, our (inaudible) Hub Grant application for the, the CFA application with the state. And the last one would be, um, DHB, uh, they did some work on ABR, so ABR has to give the town a check, so we can pay VHB for their services related to the ABR project, and as long as we get that money in, there'll be a resolution approving that payment, but that is a hundred percent funded by the applicant, and not by the town, but it still requires a (inaudible).
The renaming is probably against, or, no, it was in our contract, right? I, I don't remember, do you remember if, if, if it is, was there, um, okay, well, I, well, I don't know what they mean, I don't remember.
Fifty percent of the revenue they get for the ready naming rights for the amphitheater, did you have?
Yeah, and, and do we know what we got, or is there any (inaudible)?
They, they haven't signed a contract with, uh, Penny Sabre, so I don't know exactly what it is, but, I don't, have we finally signed a contract with them?
No, it's a meeting, it's a morning.
I, I, I think we need to know that before we (inaudible).
Know that we've signed our contract.
Yeah, know that for, or, not that it's (inaudible), but that, what, what's the number that it is.
I think on that point, I mean, there, there, that point has kind of reached a resolution, I mean, fifty, fifty, is that right?
And I think they may be prepared to share that on Tuesday, at the meeting, the scratch a little bit there, so we'd, share the, the actual number with the board before you, you vote.
And then how long does it go on for?
We just, um, five years?
Yeah, for three years, um...
Three years with an option?
The option, yeah.
Just like, kind of like, an annual payment, or is it just like a one-time?
No.
I don't know.
So we'll, uh, we'll make sure that, they have a representative. Okay, uh, anybody have any (inaudible)?
I've got two (inaudible), one, uh, we did last year for the, uh, the (inaudible) (inaudible). It's (inaudible) (inaudible). It's like, like, that, (inaudible) in, I think, prior to three years. The other one's having a public hearing, many accepted forty-eight, increasing minimum fines to one thousand dollars in added language, that will require the offender to reimburse the town for any and all costs, to mediate, or to deal with (inaudible). Having them, so it's a problem, but we do have to, to raise the (inaudible).
Okay. Trying to do that a while.
(inaudible).
Oh, no, no, you see there, where's the, the (inaudible)?
Yeah, no, this is perpetrating, I'll get there, okay, that's close.
The, uh, okay, any, uh, okay, Captain, (inaudible).
We're gonna be playing festival, three on three. Brian, myself, Vic, with you now, from Party one oh five, and I believe either Matt Meyer or Ed Morris as a substitute, uh, against the kids, at the Mastic Athletic Complex by the pool. Uh, we're hopeful if anybody wants to come down and watch, here it's on, on July twenty-seventh. Steve, if you'd like to come down, that's (inaudible). Why, you know what?
I ruined the (inaudible), everything.
I may, I may play, but I might have to, we just...
You just ran an marathon, did very well. Really, maybe, what did you run, a (inaudible)?
In blue, (inaudible).
You know.
That was great, Sean.
But, hey, I feel, I feel, we, we, we...
It could be good, good, that's... Could be great, we have...
Could be great, we have Party one oh five, some four days.
If you have a plan for, you don't need any more players?
No, it'll be, I mean, we could sell people, you know, we'd love to have you. Well, here's what we're doing, the kids who come down, we play this for everybody. Obviously, we've got to give ourselves a chance, we played last year. Now, last year, we won the first game, lost the second game, and we lost the third game. And I'll tell you that Matt Minor plays inspired ball. We're going to take the kids who come down, sign up, give them a raffle ticket, let them sign their name and a number, we're going to mix them up. That way, three kids in Athens probably will never play together, will have to play as a team, we've played together, so maybe we'll have a little bit of that. Totally fair.
You really shouldn't stack it like that. You playing the people you played before in tournament?
Matt Minor was near, he can't have that. He was hot that game, not if he was cool.
How can we stack it, we don't have a single player over, over six foot tall.
How, how are we doing?
Uh, I think that's it, we don't have any second session, so if anybody has anything, uh, ask them for a turn.